5:00 PM. This is the special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a special meeting on Tuesday, October 27, 2020, at 5:00 PM via the WebEx teleconference meeting link provided on the Agenda Center at the City of Brownsville website. Members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through WebEx teleconference can join at the numbers listed on the agenda with the WebEx link. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So it is now 5:01 PM and we can call the meeting to order.
We'll call the meeting to order, thank you.
Okay, I do have Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Galonsky. I still don't see Commissioner Mungia, Commissioner Gowan. I don't see, oh yes, I do see Commissioner Mungia.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, and Commissioner Tetra, I see her. And then we have Commissioner Gowan, Neese, and the mayor. So that's our roll call and now we will have our indication by Pastor Brad Burke.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the blessing this nation if we have. Lord, first of all, we ask you to continue healing those who need healing, comfort those who have lost loved ones, and continue to give our leaders wisdom concerning this virus. Lord, we ask you during this time to lead our voters. Help each one of them to really research their candidates to find out which ones have your values and vote for those. Lord, we ask you to heal our nation, bring us together, and lead and guide each of us for whatever preparations we need to make for the future. Thank you so much for all of this. We ask you specifically for wisdom for our mayor and commissioners and everyone presenting tonight for the best for the City of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. And now let's take a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Our next item is proclamations and we have one proclamation observing Ruth Bader Ginsburg Day and honoring Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Commissioner Neese, did you want to read the proclamation?
I'll be happy to.
Okay, Leo's got it on the screen.
Okay. "A proclamation of the City of Brownsville, Texas recognizing and honoring Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg of Brooklyn, New York was one of the most notable and influential justices to have served on the Supreme Court of the United States. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg broke barriers and served with distinction as a law professor at Rutgers Law School and Columbia Law School and as a co-founder of the Women's Rights Project at the American Civil Liberties Union. And whereas the American Civil Liberties Union of Texas is a trusted community partner and longtime member of the Brownsville community. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg served on the United States Courts of Appeal for the District of Columbia Circuit for 13 years and on the United States Supreme Court for 27 years. And whereas the jurisprudence of Ruth Bader Ginsburg blended moral purpose with precision and technical mastery of the law and embodied the Jewish values of "Tikum Alam", repairing the world. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg brought to her entire legal career, including her jurisprudence, a focus on reducing discrimination particularly against women of every race, class, and life experience. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg paved the way for the Equal Credit Opportunity Act, which allowed women to qualify for a mortgage, credit card, or bank account without a male cosigner, and pushed to have pregnancy discrimination recognized as a form of gender discrimination under the law, expanding the rights and protection of every person in Brownsville. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg fought to protect and expand access to essential reproductive health care for all individuals in this country and in Brownsville, where reliable access to health care is essential to the well-being of our community. And Planned Parenthood South Texas, one of the largest reproductive health providers in Brownsville and the surrounding areas benefited greatly from Ruth Bader Ginsburg's relentless advocacy for access to all forms of health care. Whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg fought for gender justice, voting rights, abortion rights, the rights of immigrants, and the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals. And whereas the City of Brownsville is committed to upholding and protecting those rights and Ruth Bader Ginsburg's profound legacy and is equally committed to guarding against efforts to deliberately erode access to those rights. And whereas the nation and our city are deeply indebted to Ruth Bader Ginsburg, a truly distinguished American. And whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg passed away on September 18, 2020, and the City of Brownsville extends a heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Ruth Bader Ginsburg and acknowledges the lifetime of service of Ruth Bader Ginsburg to the United States as a trailblazing attorney, acclaimed scholar, and a brilliant jurist. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim October 27, 2020, a citywide day of mourning in honor of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and her legacy. Done this the 27th day of October 2020, signed by the members of the commission and the mayor. And I want to thank Commissioner Cowan for seconding me on bringing this great proclamation here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neese. Very much appreciate it.
Our next item is our public comment period and we have received six public comment forms. The first form received was from Stephanie Dominguez.
Can she hear?
Stephanie, are you present?
Yes, I was unmuting myself.
No problem. Yes, we can.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Dominguez. And on behalf of Planned Parenthood South Texas, our staff, volunteers, and our patients, I want to thank the City of Brownsville mayor and commissioners for passing today's proclamation in honor of the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Her recent death is a painful loss for our country and our highest court. Justice Ginsburg's voice, values, courage, and leadership will be deeply missed. Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg stood up for gender equality, reproductive rights, LGBTQ+ freedom, and health care for all. She elevated the concerns of the unheard and overlooked. Justice Ginsburg was a remarkable relentless trailblazer who inspired millions of girls and women to fight through sexism and discrimination to make America a better place to work, to live, and to love. We thank her, we honor her legacy, we continue her work. We continue the work to ensure every person, no matter who they are, how much money they make, or where they live, has the right to control their own bodies, lives, and futures. On the Supreme Court, even in dissent, she showed us how to keep going, to never give up. For 27 years on the court and throughout her entire career, she never wavered in her determination to protect the rights and freedoms of every single person in this country. In her honor, we will keep going. We will keep fighting to ensure the voices of our patients are heard. We'll continue doing everything we can to provide expert high-quality health care at our health center in Brownsville. Through our education program, Habla con tu hermana, we will ensure that people have the information to plan their families and their futures. Through our community engagement work, we will continue to rally supporters in the Rio Grande Valley to support access to health care. And when our patients need us, we'll be there no matter what. This is our promise and how we'll continue to honor Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next form received was from Maria. Maria, are you present?
Sí, aquí estoy. ¿Me pueden escuchar?
Sí, bienvenida María, tienes tres minutos, gracias.
Buenas tardes, soy María Cordero, soy una activista en mi comunidad. Vivo en el distrito número uno de la ciudad de Brownsville desde hace más de 20 años y estoy hablando hoy en apoyo a la proclamación en honor a la juez Ruth B. Ginsburg. Primeramente quiero agradecerles por asumir esta importante proclamación y por crear el espacio para honrar a la justicia Ginsburg y su legado. La juez Ginsburg fue un héroe para mí personalmente y para muchos otros. Ella realmente ha dejado este país cambiado debido al trabajo que hizo en su vida. Su misión de vida fue proteger, defender, y expandir las libertades civiles para cada persona. Comenzó su carrera en la Facultad de Derecho de Harvard como una madre joven. Fue una de las únicas nueve mujeres en su generación en su clase. De ahí creció hasta convertirse en la autora de una estrategia legal para terminar la discriminación de género en la ley en los Estados Unidos. Ella fue fundadora del proyecto de derechos de la mujer en el ACLU. No es una exageración decir que el mundo tal como lo conocemos ahora sería muy diferente sin Ruth B. Ginsburg. Para mí personalmente como luchadora de los derechos constitucionales en Brownsville... Perdón. Ella ha sido un faro guía para mí durante muchos años. Ella luchó por la autonomía de la mujer para determinar el curso de su vida y por lo tanto disfrutar de la misma estatura de ciudadanía. Si bien el vínculo entre igualdad y acceso a la atención médica básica puede parecernos mucho muy obvio para algunos, la habilidad de juez Ginsburg le dio el sentido preciso para hacerlo claro para todos. Y ya que como yo personalmente siempre lo he dicho, un derecho sin acceso no es un derecho completo. Para terminar, los dejo con una frase de juez Ginsburg que se ha convertido en un lema para mí. Cambio real, cambio duradero, ocurre paso a paso. Hoy agradezco a la ciudad de Brownsville porque dio el paso correcto al aprobar esta resolución para honrar su legado a través de acción. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, María.
Our next form received was from Marcia Griffin.
Good evening and thank you very much for allowing me this time. I am Dr. Marcia Griffin. For over a decade, I serve children and families as a pediatrician at the Brownsville Community Health Center here in Brownsville. And I am now a professor of pediatrics at the UTRGV School of Medicine. I'm also a mother and a grandmother. It was a sad day for me and the country when Ruth Bader Ginsburg died. I thought of all the things in my life that had changed because of her influence throughout those decades. She fought for things that I care about: immigrant rights, voting rights, men and women's rights, the right to health access, discrimination against women in the workplace. She fought all of these, fighting to end pregnancy discrimination. You can no longer be fired if you get pregnant. Imagine that. That was because of Ruth Bader Ginsburg. In the 70s, there was an unspoken quota for medical schools. Only 10% of the class could be women. I was told during those years that it by an older physician that women would get pregnant and then they would drop out or they couldn't work. So women were excluded. Justice Ginsburg fought that type of discrimination. Now, over half of entering medical school classes are women. Many of these women have their babies during medical school or residency and they still are working hard. And the men and women who choose to have their children during their position and training years are protected because of Justice Ginsburg. The system changed to accommodate and the system got better because of her. As a single mother raising three teenage girls years ago, I found I could open a bank account, get a credit card, and without bringing a man along with me to sign for me. That is because of her. I could get a mortgage and buy a home for me and my girls because of her. My mother's generations did not have these privileges. I support the proclamation brought tonight to honor Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg for the simple yet beautiful reason, the example it will set for our children in Brownsville, that all of our children have rights, no matter where they are born, no matter the color of their skin. That all of our LGBTQ+ children hold those rights as well, as do each of us, men and women. Thank you for your time and space tonight and for this proclamation. Through this, we can keep her light burning. Thank you.
Thanks, doctor.
Our next form received was from Rochelle Garza.
Hi, good afternoon, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, Rochelle.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Rochelle Garza. I'm a Brownsville native and an attorney with the American Civil Liberties Union. And I'm here to express my support for the proclamation in honor of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I'd like to say thank you so much to Commissioners Neese and Cowan for presenting this and to the whole commission for honoring Justice Ginsburg and recognizing the impact that she had, not only in our country but on our city and every single one of its inhabitants. Justice Ginsburg began her career at Harvard Law School as a young mother and only one of nine women in her class. And she became the architect of a legal strategy to eradicate gender discrimination completely in the United States. And without Justice Ginsburg's work, we would not be where we are today. Her work has meant a lot to me on a personal level, as a woman, as an attorney, and as an advocate for equality. I would not be able to have been the director of my own life to decide when and if to be a parent, to rent an apartment or own a home without a spouse if it had not been for her. I have thought about her at every milestone of my life and I am incredibly grateful and honored to stand on her shoulders and to continue the work. So thank you so much to the commission for having passed this proclamation and honoring a real trailblazer and a real role model for people everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next form received was from Emma Isnaga.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can hear Emma.
Great. Good afternoon, thank you for having me. My name is Emma Isnaga and I'm a student at the University of Texas at Austin, raised in Brownsville, Texas. And I'm here today in support of the proclamation honoring the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. The life and legacy of Justice Ginsburg is one that has inspired myself and countless other young women to forge positive change despite the challenges we may face. Justice Ginsburg wanted to practice law, so she applied to and attended Harvard Law School. She was one of only nine women in her class. She saw inequities in the treatment of women, so in 1972, Ruth Bader Ginsburg founded the ACLU Women's Rights Project. She directed the project throughout the decade of the 1970s, bringing case after case to the US Supreme Court and establishing constitutional protections against sex discrimination. She knew the women's rights, that women's rights, the fight for women's rights would require lifelong dedication, so she took part in 34 cases at the Supreme Court, arguing six and winning five of those. She never limited herself or her self-worth. She was appointed to be a judge on the US Court of Appeals in the District of Columbia in 1980 and then to be an associate justice on the Supreme Court of the United States in 1993. In her role in the courts, Ginsburg continued to solidify constitutional rights for women and other disempowered groups. If that isn't an exceptional example of goodness, well then I don't know what is. I'm temporarily living in Washington DC, so I had the opportunity to visit the Supreme Court building the night that she passed. In those moments surrounded by hundreds of others, I began to think about what her contributions meant to my community of young Latinas from the Rio Grande Valley. Justice Ginsburg proved that no matter what we want to accomplish, it is possible with grit and determination. One of my favorite quotes of hers is that women belong in all places where decisions are being made. It shouldn't be that women are the exception, and she was right. Young women from the Rio Grande Valley are not the exception, we are the leaders of tomorrow. Justice Ginsburg was a monumental figure in the fight for equality and a resolute champion of justice. She believed in civil rights of all persons and upheld equal justice under law. She was a strong advocate for the Latino and African-American community, immigrants, the LGBTQ+ community, and women's reproductive rights. She should be an inspiration to us all. The morning after her passing, I visited the Supreme Court again. There were several sentiments written chalk along the sidewalk, but the one that caught my eye read, "She se puede, she se pudo." I couldn't help but feel like it was a message directed at myself and the powerful women in our community. Thank you to the City of Brownsville for committing to protecting and celebrating the rights that she systematically fought for her whole career.
Thank you.
Our last form received was from Paula Saldana.
Muchas gracias, voy a hacer mi comentario en español para darle justicia también a aquellas personas que nada más hablan un idioma y sería español. Y para mí, como residente de la ciudad de Brownsville, como líder de mi comunidad y activista, es importante que todas las personas sean incluidas, porque yo creo que esa también era la misión de la jueza. Le quiero dar las gracias a la ciudad de Brownsville, para mí es un orgullo inmenso decir que yo soy del Valle, que soy de Brownsville, de la ciudad donde se han tomado tantas decisiones para poder ayudar a muchas diferentes personas y muchas diferentes comunidades. La jueza, para mí personalmente, ha sido un ejemplo y me da mucho orgullo porque mis hijas que vienen detrás de mí... Vieron el ejemplo de las cosas y el gran trabajo que ella hizo. Todas las decisiones que ella tomaba, no nada más impactaba a nivel federal, sino que impactaba mi familia, mis hijas, mi comunidad, mi ciudad, y todo el estado. Ella, gracias a ella, yo como mujer he podido salir adelante, estudiar, tener mi casa, como mencionaron todos los demás, no voy a estar repitiendo cada una de las cosas por respeto a ustedes y su tiempo. Pero no quiero dejar el momento de agradecerle a ella y a ustedes por esta proclamación. De nuevo, soy muy orgullosa de ser parte de esta ciudad. Siempre cuando me toca salir a otras partes, lo digo con mucho orgullo. Y de nuevo, gracias por esta proclamación a la jueza Ruth Ginsburg.
Gracias, Paula.
Our next item is items for individual consideration. Mayor, I believe y'all were wanting to move this item to after executive session?
Right, right Laurie. What I'm going to suggest we do is we've got some individuals that are going to present to us in executive session. So just to respect their time, I'd like to go ahead and go to executive session now and take up that item. Then we can return and take up the individual consideration item. Somebody has an issue, then I'd like to get a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're now in executive session, thank you.
It's now 5:24 and the City Commission will go into executive session.
Did we just exit?
I see Commissioner Cowan. I see the mayor. I see Commissioner Tetra. I see Commissioner Neese. Commissioner Gowan, do you see her?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you see Commissioner Galonsky? Okay, and Commissioner, yeah, so we just need to make sure Commissioner Galonsky is...
I'm here, I see you, sorry.
Okay, so we have the mayor and commission are back on. It is now 7:08 and we are back in open session. And the item to be considered next is items for individual consideration. Consideration and action to assign the city auditor to conduct an audit of the Brownsville Public Utilities Board pursuant to City Charter Articles 1, 2, 5, and 6 as previously authorized by this commission on May 5, 2020, and to authorize the city manager to commit sufficient resources to assist in the audit.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. This item is a follow-up to a direction that was provided back on May 5. As the item reads, specifically however, the request that we received that was meant to be brought before you on October 20, but we were able to secure information from the PUB on Tenaska. We were bringing this before you now for the consideration of funding or resources of some sort, whether it's through our city auditor's office or externally to perform a Tenaska project audit. This request initially came into staff from Commissioner Neese, who was requesting some information. That's been provided voluntarily by PUB, but the item before you is to potentially secure additional information from the Tenaska project that could be performed with commission direction and resource allocation for that. So that's the item before you this evening.
Mr. Bernal, is there, because it's being done or because the proposal is for the city auditor to conduct it, how much resources or what resources would be needed for something like this?
That's something, mayor, that we, we're not sure without giving a quote. We can have a not to exceed number, for example, provided, or just general direction about should we do this internally? And if it's going to be done internally, what resource would the auditor need to do that? Or if he deems it more appropriate to do it externally, what resources would he need? But this would provide the direction and the latitude for us to work with him on identifying what those costs would be and how this audit could be performed.
Has anybody asked him how much or what he needs for something like this?
He's been asked for internal. Internal, he would need a staff person basically dedicated to this. And he would propose to transfer some resources from within because he's identified a way to do that. That's the internal. I haven't heard from him whether he will, that gives me the indication that he would want to do this under his oversight through the city auditor's office.
Is that the presentation, is there anything else?
There is no presentation, mayor, on this. It's just seeking commission direction regarding the performance of an audit and then allocating some resources to that effect.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, my question was, I assume that different auditors have different areas of expertise, just like lawyers or accountants or whatever. And I don't, I just want to make sure that our internal auditor is comfortable with this area and as opposed to someone from the outside.
I understand that it was his suggestion that he have an employee from in-house to assist him and he is an auditor. assist him, and he is an auditor, so they're used to auditing all of everything. I mean, this is just a transaction, and there's a lot of unanswered questions about this transaction that the public's entitled to know about. So there's nothing wrong with having our city auditor look at this and have the use of another staff member transferred to him like has been done, you know, for lots of other things during this COVID time. So it's not unreasonable because it's not going to cost any additional funds to do it. He just needs another person to help him out. So I think the commission wasn't to the public to find out everything we can about what went wrong with this project. So I'm going to make a motion to assign the city auditor to conduct an audit of the Brownsville Public Utilities Board pursuant to the Charter Articles 1, 2, 5, and 6 as previously authorized at the May 5 meeting, and to authorize the city manager to commit sufficient resources to assist in the audit, for example, cramming one employee that's already a member of the city staff to conduct this audit.
I'd like to finish my comment. I was not in any way suggesting the audit not be done. I was simply asking about the expertise. That's all.
Thank you Commissioner Gowan, and there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Neese. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that.
I think.
Oh, okay. I'll go ahead and draw, Commissioner Mungia can go ahead and second that.
I was on mute, sorry.
Any additional, any additional discussion?
I have a question. Do we know how much an external audit would cost? My only concern is just as Commissioner Gowan's concern, is that, you know, the expertise. I mean, I think this is something that we do owe to the citizens of Brownsville to try to get the best information as possible, trying to make sure that every rock is unturned and make sure that we look at every option, every angle, and that's why, you know, I would feel more comfortable having somebody with that expertise, that experience, that can actually do that. I would definitely support the audit. I would just, you know, see if, I would love to see what the cost would be for an external audit before deciding on anything like this.
I'll call the question.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
I have a comment real quick.
Counsel, when the question is called, what are our options?
Basically, it's a vote.
Okay, well then let's put it to a vote based on counsel's direction. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Maybe because she didn't want to ask my question, like, I want to leave my comment.
Counsel?
It has been voted on, Mr. Mayor. Someone called a question. Normally before calling or putting this item up for a vote, there's an opportunity for discussion. I think the motion was made at some point and it was seconded.
Yes.
It precipitated the vote unfortunately.
Okay. Okay, so then what you're saying then counsel is, it's a vote, we did, the ayes, was there a nay?
I think, Mr. Mayor, that you could still allow Commissioner Golonski to make the comment.
Sure. I mean...
Because at any point within this meeting, if somebody swayed by her comment, they could actually call for a revote or they could pull the vote. So I think it may be burdened to hear what Commissioner Golonski says.
So I just want to make sure that I understand, then if the city auditor is requesting for someone to, for someone to do it, he already has one employee. Is it that one employee or he would be entitled to have someone else to do that job? Because then I have to wonder, like, is it, are you taking on an employee, provide them benefits as a city employee, or is it just like a contract work? Like, there's so many things involved, especially then if you're going to bring someone outside, what's the scope of it? And most important of all, I would hope that this audit gets done without the interference or influence of any other city commissioners and stuff. Let the city auditor do it, do the audit, let them take care of it, because just from the comments based on right now, it seems like someone's meddling.
We have any additional comments?
I just have a quick comment, mayor. I believe Mr. Zakini, his prior role was as a lead auditor at a utility company, so I think he brings sufficient expertise in this audit. And just in my opinion, I think this issue is merited to look into, as, you know, there was $30 million spent on a project that didn't happen, and another $30 million that was, you know, that was levied on the taxpayers that hasn't been spent. So I think it's in our, it's our duty to look into this and make sure everything was kosher at the end of the day.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay, so then, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
I have a question though.
Commissioner, we already, we already had it, the vote already occurred.
Is the motion specific enough? Because all he's saying is, well, is to have the city auditor do it. So is he hiring someone or not? Or is he just using someone that's already part of the audit department?
Commissioner, my understanding from speaking to Mr. Zakini is that he just needs the manpower to be able to do it. He feels like he doesn't need anyone from the outside. My understanding, he's identified an employee of the city of Brownsville who works for the city of Brownsville that has a background in this type of work, and he would like to bring that person into his department. He doesn't really have any assistants other than Brian, so I think it's because of the workloads that he has. I think this is something that is customary and it's very natural because of the workload that he's going to be taking.
Then that's fine. I just don't understand why you're trying to avoid asking, having people ask questions. I mean, if this is, if he's already a city employee and he already gets all the benefits and stuff, and they think he's adequate enough to do it, then that's fine. But why try to hide the ball and let people not ask their questions and call the vote? That's fine, it's all reasonable. We need, these are, these are issues that we need to hash out instead of trying to prevent conversation, we should actively foster it.
Thank you Commissioner.
We had a lot of conversation when this was brought to the table by the PUB board and it was brought to the city commission.
I agree, and there was a lot of resistance, and that's what caused us to have to do this.
So much was said, nothing was done, so much was given by the ratepayers, and I think it's just like a freaking circus that needs to be unraveled at this point.
You voted on it. It's been going on for how many years and you only now are taking an interest in it?
Commissioner, thank you. Was there any ayes on this? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
I didn't vote.
Who didn't vote?
No, I didn't vote when it came to the board because it was...
That's none here nor there. Next.
I moved to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good day.
It's now 7:20 and the meeting has ended.